Good evening, everyone. I'm Dorothy Hummel. I'm the Executive Director for YWCA Southwestern Illinois. On behalf of the YWCA and the Get Out the Vote Committee, I would like to welcome all of you to the Alton School Board Candidate Forum. First, I'd like to mention that there is some campaign literature over on this table to my left. If you need to use the restrooms, you can go through this door to restrooms and head up the stairs, or you can go in the rear door, up some stairs on another level and use those restrooms. On your seats, there is a survey. And YWCA is a recipient of a State of Illinois R3 Planning Grant. And this Planning Grant allows us to study needs in the community as they relate to youth development and to youth violence prevention. So if you have a few minutes, and I'm hoping that some of you have completed the surveys while you're waiting, I would certainly appreciate it. It's your opportunity to give us your two cents' worth on those topics. At the end, if you'd just pop your surveys over in the table we'd share, appreciate it. Anyhow, getting on to the business at hand. YWCA USA believes strongly that exercising our right to vote is one of the most important things we do as citizens. We believe helping voters become informed about candidates is one way to encourage people to vote. And thus, this YWCA has been sponsoring candidate forums covering federal, state, county, and local elections since 2020. Local elections are possibly the most important elections as school boards, city councils, and mayors certainly impact our day-to-day lives. Tonight, we're focusing on the upcoming April 4 Alton School Board elections. Early voting sites are now open and will be open through March 31 and April 1 in Alton. There are six candidates running for three, four-year terms, and one candidate running unopposed to fill an unexpired two-year term. With regard to the latter, Christina Millian was appointed by the board to the position vacated by Rosetta Brown when she was elected to the Alton City Council in 2021. Under the law, while Ms. Millian has served under that appointment since '21, she is required to run for the remaining two years of that term. She is from Foster Township. So I mention this because you will see on your ballot that four of our candidates, Vivian Moncton, Jarvis Swope, Alfred Womack Jr., and Beverly Veloff are all from Alton Township. Our other two candidates, David Fritz and David Lauschke, are both from Godfrey Township. Our school district covers five different townships: Alton, Godfrey, Godfrey Non-Jersey, Fosterburg, and Wood River. By law, only three school board members can serve from any one township. The current makeup of the remaining board members, counting Ms. Millian, is Barry Messiah, who's from Godfrey Township, Dustin Christner from Alton Township, and Edmund Gray from Foster Township. Thus, there is already one member each from Alton and Godfrey, and two members from Fosterburg Townships. This gets confusing. But voters are allowed to vote for up to three candidates on the total list, no matter where they live. However, only two candidates from Alton Township can be elected this time. So for example, if three of the four Alton Township candidates received the highest vote totals, the top two would be elected, and then the county clerk's office would look to see which candidate from Godfrey Township received the most votes to fill the third position. Any other combination of vote outcomes would not require any adjustment. Tonight, the six candidates for the contested positions are present, and we sincerely thank them for participating in this forum. Christina Millian was invited, but she had a previous commitment and could not be present. As noted, the candidates are Jarvis... or pardon me, the candidates are Vivian Moncton. Can you raise your hand? Thank you. Jarvis Swope, raise your hand. Thank you. Alfred Womack Jr., raise your hand. Thank you. Beverly Veloff. See if I can remember where everybody's sitting. Thank you. David Fritz. There we go. And David Lauschke. Thank you. To start off, we invite each candidate to take up to three minutes to introduce themselves, and we'd like to tell us why he or she is running for this office. We'll start with Vivian Moncton and go on in order of their appearance on the ballot. After that, our Get Out the Vote Committee has put together four questions that each candidate will be asked to answer, giving two minutes each to answer. We'll hold up signs indicating 30 seconds left, 10 seconds left, and then stop. Each candidate will be given the chance to finish his or her thought. If we have time, at the end of the process, we will take questions from the audience. If you have a question, please write it down on the cards provided and bring it to the table to my left, and we will try to get to it. Mrs. Moncton, can you come to the podium?
Good evening. My name is Vivian Moncton. I'm an incumbent running for reelection to the Alton School Board. Prior to being on the Alton School Board, I was president of the Alton Band and Orchestra Builders, and I was also president of the Alton Athletic Association. I am passionate about serving in the Alton community, and I've taken that passion for community service and moved it to the Alton School District. I've also received recognition from the Illinois State Board of Education twice for my service to the school district. My children received a fabulous education in the Alton School District. I now have grandchildren in the Alton School District. I'm very proud of what the school district... of our school district and what we have to offer. We have great... excuse me. Anything, we range from trades and... we can... we offer trades and trade schools and vocational to honors classes. We have great sports. We have fine arts. And we all work together, the board, the teachers, the administration, and we work hard to provide what we can for our students. We provide the best education that our community can support, and I'm very pleased with what we've done over the long term that I've been on the board. The board works well together, and I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve. Thank you very much.
Jarvis Swope, can you come forward, please, for your three minutes?
I'm just a little taller. My name's Jarvis Swope. I'm a 2005 graduate of Alton High. I currently work for the city of Alton. I am the Director of Technology. I also work part-time in law enforcement. I am running for school board to first make a change in the ISBE report card. I don't like the numbers. The expulsion rate for out-of-school suspension children for black students is too high. I was adopted when I was a child, so I grew up with an African-American family. I truly believe that those young students deserve just as much help as the white students. We're all created equal. And according to the report card, because we're missing something. I believe that the teachers in the Alton School District is doing a wonderful job, along with the staff and admin and the board currently, but some things have got to change. I don't know what. I can't answer what. But my goal is to figure out what it is and what we can do to change. The second thing is, I want to create a program or something to educate the parents of the Alton School District students of the effects that social media has on children. There's been a lot of research done with TikTok. There's a video floating around on the internet that the CEO of TikTok does not allow his children on TikTok. We're adults. We... some of us probably have TikTok and Snapchat and Facebook, but our children do not need to be on social media. It's toxic. It affects their behavior. It affects their attitude. It affects their learning, and so on. So with that being said, I would appreciate everybody's vote for this election. It's my first time doing it. Like I said, I'm just doing it for the children. I believe that I can make a difference, along with the citizen's support.
Thank you. I'd like Alfred Womack Jr. to come to the podium, please.
It's okay to clap. All right. So first, for starters, I respect everybody on our school board. I've been working with the Alton School Board for a number of years. Respect the time they put into the district. Respect everything that they've done, but also believe it's time for a change. So we've had people sit on the board for a number of years, so it's time for a change. Okay? The pandemic. So during the pandemic... wait, let me go back and talk about me. She called me Alfred Womack. That's my government name. You can call me Al. Al Womack Jr. Born and raised in Alton, graduated from Alton High in 19... and I've been back in the community for more than 30 years, working with kids more than 25 years. I understand what kids need. I am encouraged and excited to be an advocate for kids. I think I can do kids even better by sitting on the school board. So I am running for school board because I want to be that voice for kids. I may struggle with my voice a little bit today, so work with me. But during the pandemic, I challenged our school district. I said, "We can't go back to normal. When school resumes, we can't go back to what the kids left." We're asking for problems. And what I heard was, "Yeah, you're right." My concern is, we went right back to doing what we were doing before the pandemic. And the effects are, we're seeing kids with more mental health issues. We're seeing poor attendance, and kids aren't learning. And we've done nothing. So I think the scores and the numbers are showing that we are failing our kids. So I want to be sitting at the table as we talk about a plan to improve the opportunities and education for our kids. Our teachers, they're suffering as well. They're struggling as well, because again, we didn't make changes. So we have to support our teachers. I am a big advocate for... we have teachers that are... I think our school district is one of the lower-paying school districts in the area, and we're losing teachers. So we want to retain teachers and offer a high-quality education to our kids. We have to pay them a little bit more. We have to be competitive so that we don't lose them to surrounding communities. So I'm an advocate for that, working with the union to sit down and come to an agreement where our teachers are happy and are comfortable working with the kids in our community. So that's important to me. I will definitely be a voice for that. We have to build community trust. I don't know if our community, if I listen to what our kids are saying and what our teachers are saying, they don't trust our district, they don't trust our board, and I want to be a component where they know that they have an ally, our kids and our teachers, on that board. And I'm not saying that about anyone else, but I know at least in me, they're going to know that they have an ally. I think we need to become a more trauma-informed district. I ask that question as well. We have to hear and see every student. We have to hear and see every teacher. Make sure that they are valued and know that they're valued from downtown throughout the school building. So we need to become more trauma-informed. We need to add layers of security and safety. I don't know if everybody realizes this. Last school year, we had a student walk our halls for two days before somebody realized that he wasn't a student. That's a safety issue. I have a concern. I have a concern with that. So we need safety. Oh, they said, "Stop." I've got 10 more minutes of work. Catch y'all later.
Can Beverly Veloff come to the podium, please?
Good evening. Before I begin, I want to first thank and give a big thank you to the YWCA Child Enrichment Program here on Third Street. This program provided after-school enrichment and childcare for our children, our own children, 2010 to 2018. Without the YWCA Child Enrichment Program, I'm not sure where our children would have been after school for all those years. So thank you for that. I also want to give a big thanks to Executive Director Dorothy Hummel and the YWCA Southwestern Illinois Get Out the Vote Project for making this event happen tonight. It's events like this that model for our citizens what it truly means to bring a community together. Thank you for your ongoing service to our community. My name is Beverly Veloff, and yes, I too am running for a seat on the Alton School Board. A little about me. I live just a few blocks away from here on 15th Street with my husband, Michael, children Clara and Kane, and our two-year-old dog named Cider. We have lived in Middletown since 2003, and you probably know my husband more than you know me. My husband served on the Alton School District... excuse me. Alton City Council as the Ward III Alderman for 12 years. So now about me. I currently serve the School District of University City in St. Louis, Missouri as a district-level curriculum coordinator. Some might not know what this is. I support and manage all of our pre-K through 12 math curriculum, K-5 science curriculum, and anything related to science, technology, engineering, and math, otherwise known as STEM, including all of our outdoor learning spaces. I have been a public school educator for more than 25 years. I'm very aware of the challenges and triumphs that our students in public schools face. As a member of this community for more than 20 years and a mom of two Alton High School students, I am seeking a position on the Board of Education because I truly believe in the public education system, and I believe that our school board should have a wide range of backgrounds represented, including an educator like myself. Prior to being an administrator, I served the public education system as a math coach, math specialist, regional professional development facilitator, and a classroom teacher. I have my Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education with a minor in Gender Studies. I have a Master's in Education with an emphasis in Curriculum and Instruction, and I hold an Administration Education Specialist degree. I've recently been recognized by the U.S. Department of Education for helping the School District of University City receive the U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School District Sustainability Award. Alton became my home after marrying Michael Veloff in 2004, who was a successful Alton High School graduate. Although Mike was born and raised in Alton, I was not. I immediately fell in love with the diverse community and sense of family that exist. We made a conscious effort and decision to have our children be raised and attend in the Alton School District. We believe that our school district should represent the city that we live in, racially, ethnically, socioeconomically, environmentally, rural, and urban. I know that a strong school district is the backbone of a vibrant city, and a strong school district has the potential to cultivate graduates who are academically prepared, innovative problem solvers, who are ready to be mindful citizens. Thank you.
Mr. David Fritz, you're next.
Good evening, everyone. As I was introduced, my name is Dave Fritz. I'm a lifelong resident of Alton Godfrey. I was born in Upper Alton and went to... graduated from Alton Senior High School back in the day. Now kids graduate from Alton High School, but was graduated from the College Avenue campus back in 1981. And since then, was a banker for a wedge bank here in Alton. That gave me a lot of experience in that realm of business. Mercantile bought us back in 94, 95, something like that. Banking became something that I wasn't in... that type of banking became something I wasn't interested in. So I was very fortunate enough to land a job with Piuson Motor Fuels down in Hartford, Illinois. I have been there for the last 25 years. Have had two employers for my life, not heard of these days as people jump from job to job. I've been fortunate enough to have two. But that experience has given me a lot that I bring to the school board. I quickly learned, after starting a family... I have a daughter that graduated in 2012. I have a son that graduated in 2016. My wife, for a while there, I couldn't get her out of fourth grade. She was a fourth-grade educator for many years. She finally moved on to a title position. Still currently works for the district in that position at Unismith. So my whole life, from being brought up through the Alton School District and then having my family, my wife, my kids go through that, volunteered with A-Bob, volunteered... we did our stint with AAA. As our daughter was the athlete in the family, my son is the musician, so we're very involved in A-Bob. My wife and I still volunteer with A-Bob for the old Alton Arts and Crafts Fair and help put that together. So hopefully, that gives you a sense of service that I bring to the district as well. It's been my pleasure to work with the board. We have a very good team. You might come to a board meeting and say that, "Well, everything passes with a 100% yes." There's a lot of discussion that goes on behind that, and as well it should. We all have... we bring several different viewpoints to our meetings and topics that we discuss. So it's... but we always come to an agreement that... and how we should best address it. We have a great administration that we've put into place. We have given... worked hard to give our teachers a very good contract for the first time in my wife's career, probably the best contract offer they've had. So again, a life of service, a life of working with the team, and willing and very much wanting to continue that for the next four years. Thank you.
And next is David Lauschke.
My name's Dave Lauschke. I'm essentially a lifelong resident of Alton. I'm one of six kids, all went through the Alton School District, all went on to college. My wife Laura and I have three kids. They also went through the Alton Public School system. They went on to college. They're all gainfully employed, thank God. I've been involved in the school board for several years. It's one of those things that I'm passionate about. I think the schools... the school district is a vital component to the success of this community. I've... I bring some background with finance. I like to push. I ask questions. I like to think at times. I'm pretty open-minded to discussion and that I can make a decision. Sometimes I'm right, sometimes I'm wrong, and then you have to reevaluate. If I didn't think that I could bring something to the school district as a board member, I wouldn't be running. Thank you.
And now for the questions. In order to give everyone a chance to be first, each question will have a different candidate order when answering. So the first question, we will start with Jarvis Swope. And the first question is, "How should the district use data such as that found on the Illinois State Board of Education website to guide decision-making and development of best practices for the district?"
Are you specifically talking about a certain amount... certain data or just all the data in general?
Data in general.
Okay. Can you just repeat the question one more time?
Yes. "How should the district use data such as that found on the Illinois State Board of Education website to guide decision-making and development of best practices for the district?"
Well, the first issue and how they should use the data is we have to figure out why the scores are so low. The out-of... like I said, the out-of-school suspension is 86... 66% for black students versus 28% for white students. As a school board, we should figure out what we can do to fix the problem. Sorry. Find the problem, fix the problem, and hopefully it works. And if not, we try again. That's... and hopefully, we can make a difference because the scores compared to other school districts are horrible, so...
Next, Alfred Womack Jr.
Same question?
Same question.
How many minutes? One, two?
Two minutes.
Okay. So first, we have to find the source of the problem. Then we have to talk to those that's being affected, the students. Okay? Why aren't they having experiences that we hope... and outcomes that we hope for them to have? And there's a problem or a reason behind that, but we need to get to the root by meeting with those kids, meeting with the educators to see how we close the gap and bridge that. And then I think there's some training that needs to go around some of these issues. I think some ongoing training. It can be one-hitters. We have... we need to have year-round trainings on those areas that we're deficient in to change the outcomes.
Next, Beverly Veloff.
I think I wore the wrong shoes for this event. Data is important. Proficiency levels are one data point. It's also important to monitor growth. Our students are coming to school to learn. That is their number-one priority. We... parents send their students to come ready to learn, and students are ready to learn. We need to make it a priority to monitor the data on a regular basis using what's in the education world called benchmark data. So you use... you look at it monthly, and then from monthly, you can drive down and look at weekly, and that includes all data points. So not just academic proficiencies, but also you have discipline, tardies, absentees, social-emotional data that you can look at, because you really need to think of a whole child. The data that you're referencing is academic data, I believe, on your paper mostly. There is some other data points there, but it's important to look and triangulate the data so that you know how to best provide an environment for a student to learn. That is the reason we are in business in the sense of education. I also want to just mention that students are coming to a certain grade level or a certain course. If you're in third grade, for example, you should have access to third-grade content and curriculum. You shouldn't be learning second-grade material in a third-grade classroom because you're being tested on third-grade curriculum. And so it's really important that teachers are also receiving feedback about the content that they're teaching so that the data is then not all on the student. It's really important that there's an alignment between the curriculum and the data points. If grade-level learning isn't aligned to standards, then we're not... we're doing a disservice to our students, and it's showing up in our data because data speaks. And I think I'm out of time.
Next, David Fritz.
I think the data is a very important tool. It helps us identify where the issues are. But I can assure you that our administration, our teachers constantly review this and see this and continually make changes. I've told my kids, growing up, if they want something to be changed, I don't have a light-switch solution. I can't flip the switch and make it better. This is a continually learning process for the board, for our administration, for our teachers, for our students. And we do put emphasis... we identify what areas we need to improve on, and we continually work to better those achievements. Thank you.
Next, David Lauschke.
The Illinois School Report Card is not something that I'm necessarily going to live or die by. We do get judged by it. It represents a snapshot in time. The more important aspect of this is the assessment pieces, the data that we collect during the course of the year. You're testing your kids at the beginning to see what level you're at. You're doing testing periodically throughout the entire school year. And again, one of the key parts is the growth that the students get. We have kids that come to this district that can be way ahead or they can be way behind. You have to constantly look at your curriculum. You have to be able to assess whether or not it's working. And then again, you also have to have a lot of professional development that comes with it. It's one of those things that's going to be a constant battle. But our curriculum, we're trying to get it set up and then assess it to make sure that it's effective. It's a constant battle.
Next, Vivian Moncton.
There's a lot of tall people in this room. I'm not one of them. We are always looking at data. Not only data from the state, but data from the individual grades, as the other people have already mentioned. as the other people have already mentioned. But we can't just test our children to death. That's just too stressful. But as the other candidates have said, we test at the beginning, throughout the school year. Our teachers collaborate among the, through the school year. But as others have said, it's not just the state report card. It's how we go, how the students progress through the beginning, through the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year, and how they move along through the year because we do obviously want the students to progress. COVID was terrible for the nation as a whole. The whole nation lost as students were home. And now we're trying to regroup and recoup the scores that we all lost as a nation, not just Alton, not the state of Illinois, but the nation. And we're trying to regain those scores that we lost. So we're all working on it. Thank you.
Question number two. This is a three-part question, and we'll start with Alfred Womack. Does the district look at discipline and academic achievement by race? Do you think they should and why or why not?
No, I don't, I don't think they should look at it by race, which is why I'm proponent for equitable, equitable policies. Equitable, I can't get that word out, but procedures, I've been practicing all week. Equitable, there it is. Okay, policies and procedures. So race should not play a factor in there. Unfortunately, when you look at the data, there's a huge disparity when it comes to race in academics and discipline. And I still think that goes back to training to eliminate some biases and some fears when it comes to kids from different backgrounds. That's it.
Thank you. Beverly Vella, next.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Yes. Does the district look at discipline and academic achievement by race? Do you think they should? Why or why not?
Discipline is another data point, back to the question just, we just previously had. It's important to look at discipline holistically, and then it is important to break it down to see if we are using discipline procedures against a certain race without being equitable. I really truly believe in equity and inclusion, and if, if there is a large proportion of our students that are getting suspended who are black versus our white students, that needs to be discussed and really looked at and honed in on from a data point of view. Discipline shouldn't also be like a standalone. It should be from a student surveys. I know the district offers out the five essential surveys and to think about the whole child of how the discipline data is viewed. Also thinking about the parent, the teacher, the building, all procedures that are in place for discipline. And there might be some policies that need updating based on discipline data as well.
Thank you. David Fritz.
May I have it one more time, please?
Yes. Does the district look at discipline and academic achievements by race? Do you think they should and why or why not?
I look at discipline as structure, and I think that our schools have to have structure. I know that all students are given the expectations twice a year at least to know what is expected of them. I make no bones about discipline so that our students and our staff have a safe place to learn. I have no doubt that our board, when it comes to us, it's an expulsion. Administration at the school level takes care of suspensions and that. If it gets to our level, it's usually a case of expulsion. We don't look at race, at least this, these eyes don't look at race. We look at the student and what happened, what the case was, and how it affected the learning prospects at the school. Again, our schools have to be a safe place for our students to learn, our teachers to teach. And I think that our administration certainly should look at it continually to make sure that we're not overstepping our bounds. But I can tell you that in my opinion of the operation of the district, I don't see that happening. I think children make bad choices and students make bad choices and are disciplined from those bad choices. Now, we should offer them help and guidance as to what those bad choices were and why they were bad choices so that they don't make them again. But there has to be a structure and a framework for them to work within themselves and the teachers and the administration to work within. So, thank you.
Thank you. David Lousky.
I know that we're aware of the discipline and achievement, but I like to think of it as all the kids. When we have, when, in our school district, we're always trying to reinforce positive behaviors with kids. It doesn't always work that great. When we have disparities, we have to understand why it is occurring. We have to look for interventions. I like to look at it as all the kids, but we do have to be aware of the disparities and there are those.
Thank you. Vivian Moncton.
I do not feel that we base discipline and academic achievement or lack thereof on, based on race. As previous candidates have spoken, when expulsion hearings are probably the least favorite part of board service, it's very disheartening to us on the board. There's policies set in place for the safety of students and for our staff. And when a student comes to us, it's for the safety of that student, the safety of other students, the safety of our staff. And if a student is expelled, we give them other educational opportunities. We just don't set them out on the street. And so, and we don't take these lightly. We don't look at, we look at the student as an individual. We don't look at the race of the student. We look at the behavior of the student that brought the student to that process. And we take it very seriously. And we try and work with that student and the student's family to hopefully help that student overcome the decision that brought them to that place and get them back into the educational process and help them understand why they got to the board and an expulsion process. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jarvis Schwo.
I do believe that we should collect that data. According to the data now, obviously there's a problem. We have to identify where the problem is. Eighty-six percent of the Alton High School students, or eighty-six, sixty-six percent of the Alton High School students were black that were in out-of-school suspension. We need to figure out why. Is there something going on at home? We need to offer the parents help, the ability to figure out what is going on with that child. Is it something they're missing? Is it, they're depressed or they, you know, low poverty levels? Something that's making that chick, that child act out like that. Sixty-seven percent of the black students, sixty-seven percent of the students were expelled. Sixty-six percent were out-of-school suspension. Like I said, we have to figure out why. That's, that's a broad number. I don't know what goes on in those expulsion hearings, but there's something going on. There's no reason or why that number should be that high. Those numbers should be equal or within 10% of each other. We need to identify the problem and help, help the parents. I seen the lady in the back, she was shaking her head. I don't know what's going on, but obviously she has some disheartening with the current board, the decision of expelling a child. That doesn't help the child. It only hurts the child. As far as I'm aware, we do not have a facility within the school district for these children to go. My understanding is we ship them off to Troy, which that could be a burden on that family. We all have to work day to day, so shipping that child off to Troy or to another facility to learn isn't helping that children. It's hurting that children, the children. Thank you.
Question three. An achievement gap occurs when one group of students such as race or ethnicity group outperforms another group. For Alton High School, the data shows double-digit differences in proficient, proficiencies between white and black students for the 2021-22 school year in English Language Arts, Math and Science. For example, in science, 54% of the white students tested proficient as compared to 19% of the black students. Another measure of student progress is ninth grade on track, measuring the likelihood that a student at the end of ninth grade will graduate in the expected four years. There is a 34% gap between white and black students at Alton High. How do you see these learning disparities as a problem to be addressed by the school district? If no, why not? If yes, what can we do as a district to change these disparities? The first person will be Beverly Vella.
I think the last part of the question was, do I see it as a problem and what are the disparities are? So yes, the achievement gap is a problem, and I'm going to go back to my answer a couple of questions ago. If our students don't have access to their on-grade level curriculum, then they are normed against other students nationally. They aren't normed against other kids nationally because they haven't had access to the content that they need. And so it's a disservice to students. So it's absolutely important that our curriculum is aligned to grade level standards, number one. Number two, that it's taught with fidelity to those grade level standards without interpretation, meaning overstraffed or, and that's a teacher word, I apologize, that the rigor level hasn't been taken away so that teachers aren't just telling students what to think and how to think, but that students are thinking for themselves. That's important to close the achievement gap. Our students, again, are ready and they come to school ready to learn. Some of the discipline that we talked about earlier comes when there is frustration in classrooms connected to content that is being taught or they're not being seen or heard or felt successful. So it's really important that our social emotional skills and standards are also in place so that the whole child is seen and heard and felt successful within the classroom so that the academic achievement gap can close.
Next, David Fritz.
Again, it's an issue that we're continually aware of. It is something that I would like to give credit to our teachers and staff. I'm biased. I'm married to one, so forgive me. But I've, in my tenure in the Alton District, I've seen the passion that our teachers give to each one of their students. I don't think I'm in favor of ranking our kids against a national average. I want our teachers and our staff to address the needs of our students. COVID set us back two years in curriculum, and that's, in my mind, that's a curriculum shift that we're maybe slowly making headway with, but we're not there yet. But again, I want to give that personal, I want our teachers to give, I say I, I want our teachers to give that personal service to the, to the students as for what they need. If it's second grade learning that needs to take place in third grade, then we'll give them the extra, the extra help. Get them the extra help, and that help is there. I know teachers stay after, even in grade school, teachers stay after, stay in for lunch and cater to the needs of the student in front of them, not some national average, not where they need to be, but what our kids need in our community. Thank you.
Next, David Lousky.
So I think your question in there was recognizing the achievement gap and discipline gap. Is that what that was?
Do you, do you see these learning disparities as a problem to be addressed by the school district? If no, why not? If yes, what can we do as a district to change these disparities?
If we could answer that question. Yes, I think you have to be aware of this. I think we're always constantly aware of this. And it's not something that just happens in the classroom. You have to have your curriculum aligned. You have to make sure that those that are in the classroom are teaching the curriculum the way it's supposed to be taught. In addition, you have to pay attention to what's going on outside of school. You know, what are these kids, what are these kids dealing with after school? How many kids, two meals a day, that may be, the only meals they get are the meals they get in school. How many kids are going to be worrying about where they're going to be sleeping that night? I mean, there are a number of factors that go into this, discussing the achievement, discussing the discipline, and how you solve that problem is not easy. It's something that we're continually looking at. It's something that we are very much aware of. It's not a simple solution.
Next, Vivian Moncton.
Of course, it's a problem. Who would say that it wasn't a problem? I mean, we're all concerned about the achievement gap. But as everyone else has said, there's so many factors other than just what happens in the classroom. We ask so much of our staff, and we continue to ask more and more of our staff, but our staff can't solve everything. Just as we've said before, COVID set the nation as far, so far behind on education. So many of our students did not have access to computers at home, to wifi at home, to hotspots. So now we're trying to recoup the two years that we lost. Some of the students were able to do okay with remote learning. Some students couldn't do it all. So now you have students that in ninth grade did okay during remote learning. Some students are lost two years because they just did. So then, as, as Mr. Lousky said, other students have, get breakfast and lunch at school. Do they get dinner? Where are they sleeping? Do they have clean clothes? Do they, is mom home? Is dad home? Do they have older siblings at home? There's a lot of other factors at home that may or may not lend itself to how are we going to do tomorrow at school? So there's, there's a lot of factors that go into how well are you doing at school. But we do, our teachers do their best and we have extra stu, we have extra staff. We have teachers assistants in the classroom, and we're doing our best to bring everybody up to the levels that they need to be. It's always a struggle. Thank you.
Next, Jarvis Schwo.
Can you repeat that last question, the last section one more time?
Yes. Do you see these learning disparities as a problem to be addressed by the school district? If no, why not? If yes, what can we do as a district to change these disparities?
Yes, there is a problem. Like I said earlier, we need to isolate the problem and work with the parents and not give up on the parents and the student and, and find the problem. Is it money? Is it they don't have adequate internet access? There's a single mom, food, housing, you know, there's a lot of things that people are struggling with in today's world, but we have to come together as a community to help each other out. Otherwise, we won't succeed. We can't fail these children because they are the future. They're going to be our next astronaut. They're going to be our next doctor. But if we give up on them, then they're just going to end up in the system somewhere and somewhere where we don't want them to be. So yes, we truly have to find the problem. Is the issue, like I stated earlier, social media? Are they spending too much time on social media instead of looking in the books? Are their parents, do their parents, were their parents not as educated? That could be a problem. Single parenting. So yes, that's, it is a problem, and we need to find out, find it as
Next, Alfred Womack Jr.
That was a long question. So, I'm going to try to give a short answer. So, first of all, we need our heroes to show up. Our teachers are our heroes. We need them to show up every day. We need to support them. We have to eliminate excuses. I've heard excuses tonight. Eliminate excuses, let's get right to learning, get in our kids and learn. So, if they don't learn the way we teach, what should we be doing? Teach the way they learn. It's not the same. It's just not the same. And I think we need to adopt that method, that these kids aren't learning the old way of teaching. We have to teach the way that they're going to learn. And then, we have to eliminate the sympathy and be better at empathizing with our kids. If we empathize with them, we can align with them and understand what they're going through and help them a little bit more. So, what I've learned in the last couple of months is, we're just rushing kids along because the state says, here's what you have to be doing, and the kids aren't learning. And that's why they're not learning, because we're rushing them along, because we're trying to meet standards versus meeting them where they're at and develop them, develop them so that they can advance and excel.
Thank you. Okay. Question number four. During the 21-22, I'm sorry, we're going to start with David Fritz. During the 21-22 school year, there were six expulsions at Alton High School. Four were black students and two were biracial. None were white. There are similar disparities in our out-of-school suspension at the Alton Middle School. There were two expulsions, both were black. Our students of color in the Alton School District are clearly experiencing disparate exclusionary discipline as compared to their white counterparts. Do you believe that anything should be done to change this? Why not if yes? And what do you think should be done to address this issue?
Well, again, I'm not sure, the numbers say there's an issue, obviously. But you look at our community makeup and the socioeconomic standards, there are a myriad of things. I mean, it was stated before, Mr. Laowsky and others have stated, what are the kids going to eat tonight and that? So, there's a lot of decisions, there are a lot of items that go into what makes a student act out, or break a rule, or create, or enter into an expellable offense. Ms. Moncton alluded to it earlier, that it is the most heartbreaking part of this job to go to an expulsion hearing and know that we are going to change the student's life. But also knowing that we also give them opportunity to continue their education after they are expelled. They're removed from the community at Alton High School or Alton Middle School. They are given the opportunity to go to another alternative school. They are bused to the school. So, it's no, no issue on the parents or the family members or the support that that student has. So, getting back to the question, I guess, yeah, we should keep aware of what that difference is. But I can assure you, again, from my eyes, one-seventh of the board, I read the facts that come before me of what happened, what the situation was, what the student did, regardless of race or any other condition that you want to tag on to it. You have to do that. It's like justice with a blind eye. You can't, that's our job to look at it fairly and clearly through those lenses. So, yes, we should keep an eye on it if, to identify if there is a problem, and then take, not chances, but take the opportunity to address those problems. But I don't feel that there is a racial problem when it comes to discipline in the Alton District. It happens to be that those, that's the makeup of the mix that has come to us before the board for that, that time period. So, but as one-seventh of the board, I can tell you that that doesn't factor into my decision when I vote on the eventual outcome of that hearing. But again, keep, certainly keep track of it to identify circumstances, to see if there is a problem and address that if we feel that there is. I don't feel that there is.
Thank you. David Laowsky.
Can you give me that question one more time?
Yes. During the 21-22 school year, there were six expulsions at Alton High. Four students were black and two were biracial, none were white. There are similar disparities in out-of-school suspensions. At the Alton Middle School, there were two expulsions, both were black. Our students of color in the Alton School District are clearly experiencing disparate exclusionary discipline as compared to their white counterparts. Do you believe that anything should be done to change this? If not, why not? And if yes, what do you think should be done to address this issue?
I'd like to think that our administrators are very aware of enforcement of the discipline, and I'm sure they are absolutely conscious of the disparity. I'd like to think that they're trying to be equal in their discipline policies. I think we need to look at all of the discipline that came up, and if we're going to go through this data and we're going to look at why somebody was expelled, why they weren't expelled, why they were in school or whatever, I think we need to look at all of the discipline that occurred to see if there's any irregularities. As board members, we're going to set policy. We're going to expect the administration to carry out those policies. And yes, this board and the boards that I have served on do question on all of these, all this data, all these statistics, every year I've been on the board. But, I mean, just looking at that without knowing what the entire pool is, it's hard to discern if it's one of those things, that's the way it is, or hey, we have a real problem here. The disparity is too big, I agree. But what's the real cause? And that's what we need to, you'd have to look at all of it to make sure.
Okay. Thank you. Vivian Moncton.
Again, going back to expulsions, which is the least favorite part, I can't say favorite, it's the most heartbreaking part of being a school board member. No one wants to remove a child from the school. And it bothers all of us. And administration brings those students to us. And as Mr. Laowsky said, I'm confident that the administration takes into account the actions of that student before that student is brought to the board. They don't take the behavior lightly before they bring it to the board. But at some point, a student's behavior is, it's not only detrimental to the other students and to the staff, but it's also detrimental to that student. If that student is misbehaving so badly that they're brought to the board for expulsion, that student is not getting a good educational experience at that time. So, they would benefit from being removed from that setting to do a reset, if you can, an educational reset. But I do think there, we should look at the total picture and see if we can, if we're missing something in the overall picture of why it's, the race is, the racial makeup is what it is. But you have to understand that no one takes it lightly. Thank you.
Thank you. Jarvis Schwoop.
Can you read the question again, please?
Yes. During the 21-22 school year, there were six expulsions at Alton High. Four were black students and two were biracial, none were white. There are similar disparities in our out-of-school suspensions. At the Alton Middle School, there were two expulsions, both were black. Our students of color in the Alton District are clearly experiencing disparate exclusionary discipline as compared to the white counterparts. Do you believe that anything should be done to change this? If not, why? And if yes, what do you think should be done to address this issue?
Yes. I stated in the previous questions, obviously, there's some type of problem that's going on in the child's life, the reason why they're acting out, you know, the 2% of black students that were expelled, does that trickle over into them going to high school? What we did in middle school, did it not fix the problem? Or did it make it worse? I truly believe pulling a student out of their learning setting and put them into another setting doesn't help that child. I guess it could, but my belief is that it doesn't help that child, it makes that child more uncomfortable. The issue has to be at home. What is going on at home? We need to reach out to the children and the parents and the counselor and sit down with that children and not give up, not saying that they are giving up on them, but the numbers, it seems like that we're giving up on some of these students, not just black, even the biracial, even the white students. In a perfect world, this would be 0%. The numbers are too high. We need to figure out what the problem is and address it. Personally, I've seen quite a few students that come to the expulsion hearings, that come to City Hall. They are black students. I have not to see any white yet. But there is a problem, and we need to address it. That's it.
Thank you. Alfred Womack.
I promise I'll be okay if y'all call me Al. I'll be okay with that. Either way, let's get started. So, first, we have to practice patience, and I think that's something that, as a district, we need to practice patience and become more trauma-informed. And once we become trauma-informed, I think we will be able, again, empathize with the kids and the students and the issues that they're struggling with before they even walk into the school building. Also, because yesterday's been a rise in discipline issues, so many of our heroes don't look like the students that are getting in trouble. So, they're not able to relate and connect with the same people that are discipling them. So, that's a problem. So, we definitely have to do more in terms of recruiting people of color. So, lack of diversity and connection is an issue that affects discipline. Unfortunately, there are some biases in our policies. We know that. Because in the policies, if our board follows the policies, based on policy, this child should be expelled. But these policies are old and outdated. And so, I do question and ask this board, when is the last time we reviewed policies to make them apply today? So, again, if I sit on this board, it's going to be, I'll ask those questions. Again, I will be one-seventh of the votes, but there will be questions along all these lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Veloff.
My answer is yes. We need to review policies and procedures that are currently in place. The data is disproportionate. We have 58% of our students white, 28% black, and the statistics that you read and when the questions do not match the enrollment that's within the school district, specifically Alton High that you referenced. So, there's something that's disproportionate there. My background is in education, and I will always advocate to eliminate racism. My, students need to feel safe, supported, seen, heard, and successful. And when there's suspensions and expulsions in place, they don't feel any of that. And so, it's important to monitor the policies and procedures that are in place. Of course, there are always going to be certain situations where a student breaks the law sometimes, that there are consequences in place. That doesn't always mean expulsion. I did not become an educator to exclude anyone from learning. We want all of our Alton students to be confident citizens that are able to advocate, not only for themselves, but also for others. As mentioned earlier by one of my partners up here, none of us are getting any younger than some of us, and some of our very own Alton students will be caring for us as we age gracefully. I have been trained, and it is important to teach content in a way that students can see themselves, see themselves in others, and be exposed to experiences outside of their norms. It's called windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors. It's important that we don't limit those windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors for our students. As I was reviewing for tonight, I noticed that the Discipline Improvement Plan was updated and submitted in the year, this 22-23 school year, with very clear actions. I would like to review that again and think about the students that we are suspending and expelling to see how that discipline plan connects to the data that is being shared I'm going to leave it there.
Question five, we'll start with David Laowsky. What are your thoughts on changing school curriculum to change Black history or any other ethnic history?
So, the question is, changing Black history?
What are your thoughts on changing school curriculum to change Black history or any other ethnic history?
These are questions now from the audience.
These are what?
These are questions from the audience now.
Okay, I'm not sure what, we're talking about changing Black history. I'm not sure what the question is. Who was asking the question?
I think it has more to do with what's going on in other districts as far as trying to whitewash, you know, the curriculum, to change the curriculum to make white students feel less guilty about slavery. I mean, I think that's where that's coming from.
Okay, history is history, good and bad. I'm not sure how this question is coming out, but the point is, history is history, and if it's bad or it's good, we have to discuss it. I'm not sure where you're coming with the question, so I'm just going to have to say that I don't know why you would whitewash it, period. That's the best I can do with that one.
Next, Vivian Moncton.
Well, I don't think you can change history. I mean, history is history. You can learn from history, you can take what happened in history and say, let's learn from this. This is what happened in history, so let's learn from this. Let's take the bad and the good, and let's learn from it. But I don't think you can change it. You can't change anything that happened in the past and say, we're going to pretend like it didn't happen because we didn't like the outcome. Who am I to say that I didn't like this outcome, so I'm not going to teach it? I'm not the judge and jury. So, it's history. We're going to teach it, and we're going to learn from it, we're going to discuss it. I can't change history. And so, I would not dare to say that I'm going to demean it, change it, alter it. Learn from it, teach it, move forward.
Next, Jarvis Schwoop.
Could you repeat the question again, please?
What are your thoughts on changing school curriculum to change Black history or any other ethnic history?
Well, I truly believe Black history is important as any history. I recently found out that the Super Soaker gun was invented by a black guy. I didn't know that. The, there was an also, the Nerf gun was invented by a black man. I didn't know that. So, history is very important, no matter what race. Really, the race shouldn't matter. History is history, even if it happened 20 years ago. I tell my stepkids all the time, years ago, this used to be there, years ago, this used to be there, and they're so excited to know about that. And if we don't keep teaching history, our kids are not going to know, and they're just going to keep going and going and going. Our goal is to teach the history, let it repeat hundreds and hundreds of years from now. That's it.
Next, Al Womack Jr.
So, pretty much to echo what everybody else has said, like, history is history, we can't change it, we need to continue to teach it, and because there are so many cultures that make up this country and this community, then we should be addressing the history from all cultures, so that every young person can appreciate where they come from and what they come from. We need to eliminate this fear of someone learning something, whether it's good or bad, that took place in our country. I'll be honest, I missed history in high school, I didn't like history. I went to HBCU to really appreciate Black history. So, yeah, it's encouraged.
Next, Beverly Veloff.
I don't believe in any curriculum that promotes biases. I don't promote curriculum that have narrowed lenses either. It's important that students have access to, again, see themselves, see others, and see themselves in the world that we live in. Culturally relevant teaching is teaching students, the teaching to the students you teach. So, if I have an Orthodox Jewish
So if I have an Orthodox Jewish person in my classroom, I'm gonna make sure that I bring in Orthodox Jews' culture within that classroom so that they are seen, heard, and successful.
Next, David Fritz.
I could just say ditto, I think, but I'll put it in my own terms. Yeah, history's history. It's not gonna change, and all of it should be taught. Not just because there's a certain kid in a room or a certain background in a room. All history should be taught without bias, without favoritism. Again, we can't change it. I would hope that we would teach what was, I'm gonna be 60 this year, you can hold your applause, but what was right in 1963 is not right, was not right in 2023, or was in 1923. I mean, we have evolved as a community, and we should continually evolve. It's like looking at the district's policies, it's like looking at the classrooms and how they're attended. We should continually look with an eye as to how we can improve that. That, it's, again, it goes back to something I said earlier, there's not a light switch fix. I can't flip the light on and make it right, but I'm willing to work with the board and the administration and our teachers to teach a whole history so that every student gets introduced to where we have been, where we are, and how we can evolve from where we are now and continue to grow to improve that status, that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, start with Vivian Moncton. What do you believe to be the proper role of parents in the education of their children?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What do you believe to be the proper role of parents in their education of their children?
A huge role. Parents are the number-one educator of their children. I mean, education starts with the birth of your child. I mean, a parent is the first educator of your children. And parents teach in conjunction with the teachers. And just because a child's going to school doesn't mean that that teacher's role, that parent's role as a teacher, is done. Because teachers need the cooperation of the family at home. So much of what happens at school coincides with what happens at home. You need to help your children with, how was your day? Did you have homework? You give them dinner. You give them clean clothes. You nurture them. You read to them. You just, you give them experiences in the community. You take them to the park. I mean, a parent is the teacher also. And it's just, a parent and a teacher work side by side, but parents are such role models. And I feel so sad for children that don't have a loving role model of a parent, a stepparent, anyone that's in their camp, because it's critical to have that role. And when your children come home at the end of the day, you need to ask those questions, those open-ended questions, so you get a lot of dialogue back. Children need the role model of their parents, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Jarvis Schwoop.
Can you repeat the question again?
Yes. What do you believe to be the proper role of parents in the education of their children?
The parents, as Ms. Moncton stated, when the child comes home from school, the first thing the parents should do is ask them, how are you doing? Do you have homework? Let's eat dinner. When my two stepchildren come home, I do the exact same thing. I sit down with them. I do their, help them do their homework. If I don't understand, I understand the homework, then I feed it to them. I also make sure that if they don't, their penmanship isn't correct. I make them rewrite until it is correct. If it's not to my satisfaction when I was growing up, then they're not done with their homework. But the parents are part of the future of the, 100% is the heart of that children. If the parents cannot sit down with that children, the child, and help them, then that children will not get an education. If they don't, then we need to find someone that can help them. It took me a long time to do Common Core math. I was taught, my whole childhood in Alton School District, I did the old-fashioned way. Now trying to do it a new way is not very easy. So yes, the parents is 100% has to be there for that child and provide food, clothing, the learning capabilities for that child, otherwise that child cannot succeed.
Thank you. Al Womack.
So first, I think we have to eliminate the barriers that are keeping our parents from coming to the schools and come up with some processes where our schools are going out to the parents. Okay? And then, just in short, a child that is only educated at school is an uneducated child.
Thank you. Beverly Veloff.
I think the number-one role for parents is to be a partner with the school system. And with that, that means a partner takes two, that means the school system also needs to be a partner to the parents. So I'm a parent, and I know with myself, I wanna establish positive relationships. I want to be an active listener, not only to myself, but to the messages that are coming from the school district, whether it's the principal, the teacher, the school board, any messages. I wanna synthesize all of that information and look for trends to get a perspective as a parent. And then I wanna drive that decision-making with trends and ask questions. Because asking questions makes people think. It's important that parents ask us questions on a regular basis. And when parents aren't asking us questions, we need to ask ourselves, why aren't they asking us questions? Do they not, they think they know it all? And we need to then give them more information. Parents are reflective, like I mentioned, and then the education system needs to be reflective back. Parents are asked to give survey information out, and we need to be responsive to the survey information that's given. So in closing, I would just say, parent role is that they need to be partners.
Thank you.
I think the question needs to be broadened just a bit because so many of our students in our district have one parent. If they're lucky, they have two. When I first ran and growing up and being volunteers in the school district, I was very, am and still am very proud of the Alton School District. And I would often tell people that you get out of it what you put into it. But during the last eight years, my eyes have been opened wider. During COVID, my wife was a fourth-grade teacher. She had the gifted class, so she had gifted kids from all over the community, not just in her school, the west corridor. So, and we got to travel out to all the homes from one area to another area. So these kids had, during COVID, had big, other, older siblings teaching them. Their parents were still working. And again, it's not just parents. If you're lucky, you have two parents. I was very fortunate, and I had two parents that put into it what I got out of it. But so many of our students don't have that luxury. And so we need to find ways, the YWCA programs that they offer here, the Boys and Girls Club is another example, that have programs that offer mentoring services. There's mentors out there that I see that will take students and put an arm around them and give them the support that they need. So it's a much broader base to draw from. Parents are, you're right, I mean, the way the question's worded, parents are essential to a child's education. But there are so many more players that we need to encourage, develop, and to giving to our students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think parents are one of the most vital components to a child's education. Too often, you're gonna find that parents did not think education was vital to them, and in all likelihood, they're not going to promote it to their children. You'll find that some parents didn't get education because it was not stressed to them, and they are afraid to come in to the school and ask for help. It's one of those cycles that I think absolutely needs to be broken. I don't think that is an easy answer, but I do believe that parents are one of the most vital components to a child being successful in education. And that if that's not important to them, it's most likely not gonna be important to the child. And that's a horrible cycle.
Question seven, we'll start with Jarvis Schwoop. There's a large movement across the country to implement D E I policies, standing for diversity, equity, and inclusivity. Since the concept of equity seems to go beyond the concept of equal opportunity, could each of you define the difference between equal opportunity and equity, and how should these concepts impact school policy?
Equality and...
Equal opportunity and equity.
Well, all the students should be, everyone should be treated the same. There is no difference between anyone in this room. We're all the same, no matter the skin color, no matter your job, no matter how you grew I don't, I think that's a tough question to ask, to answer, honestly. There is, there's so many different variables that I just, I can't answer that question without, I could go on for five more minutes and talk about it.
Next, Al Womack Jr.
Can you repeat the question?
There's a large movement across the country to implement D E I policies, standing for diversity, equity, and inclusivity. Since the concept of equity seems to go beyond the concept of equal opportunity, could each of you define the difference between equal opportunity and equity, and how these concepts should impact school policy?
So that's gonna require a little bit more thought. So as far as equality, that applies to all, and equity is applying to an individual. So I think if we look at it from a policy and procedure standpoint, we want to have equitable policies, and equality for all. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Next, Beverly Veloff.
I am committed to educational equity and inclusion, and with that, the definition between the two is equity, I'll give the, I'll give an example of a child that may not be able to see. A child will need a device to either stand on, to look over, or look glasses to see above. They need something different than everyone getting glasses, for say, for example. And so we need to look at our policies to see how they're set up for equity for each child, and then also examine the policies of what's equal for each child.
Next, David Fritz.
Again, the short answer is both. Every student in our district should have equal opportunity to the best education that they can obtain. Al said it best, probably the best that I've ever heard it. Equal is for all of you, equity pertains to the one student. If a student needs extra help, whether it's glasses or the teacher staying in during their lunch hour to give them extra help, we should make every, and that's, a lot of times, that's the teacher's choice, but the district should offer programs to make sure that every student has the chance to perform to the best of their ability. And I'll leave it at that.
Next, David Lauschke.
I think they pretty much accurately described it. If a child is gonna need something to get them to be successful, then we have to figure out how to do that. You're talking about a group versus an individual. I mean, I think that's been pretty much summed up.
Again, I mean, I don't think there's much debate here. I mean, we're all equal. We should all be equal, and I think that's how we, everyone here on this stage wants us all to be treated as equals. And if an individual needs something to be brought up to that standard so they can be equal with all of us, that would be equitable. But we all want to be equal in the group. So thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Al Womack. For the incom, well, for the incumbents, I'm sorry. As you all have been in the role for years, from your unique perspective, what do you plan to recommend that you expect to be implemented in the 2324 school calendar year for challengers or their specific changes you are seeking? I'm sorry, that would be for the ones that's already been on the board. We'll start with David Fritz. Okay, I'm sorry. She told me to go back to Al Womack. I'm sorry.
All right. Hard question for you.
Okay.
Repeat that.
Well, it said for the incumbents, as you all have been in the role for years, from your unique perspective, what do you plan to recommend that you expect to be implemented in the 2324 school calendar year for challengers or their specific changes you are seeking?
Yes. And again, it's transparency. I think we have to build community trust by being transparent, and I don't know if you can be transparent enough, so I wanna add another layer of transparency by sitting on the school board in all areas, from academics to discipline to bonds, all of those things. Well, I wanna make sure we're more transparent. And I think we can become more trauma-informed, I can't stress that enough, that's the cause of some of the issues we're seeing with discipline, because we say we're trauma-informed, but we not seeing the results of us being trauma-informed. So I will make a big push for that from the top down. Those are probably two of the big things for me.
Thank you. Okay. Beverly Veloff.
As a new member to the Alton Board, I will represent the entire community, not special interests or partisan political groups. I believe in our entire community, which includes all citizens, even citizens that do not have a direct relationship with the Alton School District. I will focus on academic excellence, I'm dedicated to student achievement, and I'm a firm believer that our students deserve the best education we can provide. I will prioritize supports for social and emotional needs for all students, and I will protect the district's financial resources. There are a lot of challenging events that are part of any pre-K-12 system, and running for school board is an immense responsibility. I don't take it lightly. I will always respond with honesty and integrity. I will remain up to date with educational issues, regionally, statewide, nationally, and globally. I will push to have a student representative on our board. We are serving students. A student representative should be on our board. I would promote community engagement meetings so that our families and citizens can have more interactive sessions within the district. I will also promote a community newsletter, maybe called the Red Bird Newsletter. This would be a district newsletter that's published and mailed out to all citizens within the townships that we serve, so that all citizens know what's going on within our school district.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know that I could argue with any of that, that those are all positive boos that we could put into place. Might are a little bit more immediate. I think it's unfortunate the day we live in. We have a responsibility to our students and our staff and our buildings to make sure that those buildings are secure. It's unfortunate that we have to take these steps. We are taking... We are taking those steps to secure those buildings with entry level security. So that is the, the forefront of, of what I'm seeing and what we're working for, toward now. But I guess to, that's immediate, that's one, that's one fix, to, to create that sense of security in those learning environments. But also the continued improvement of our curriculum, uh, the, the evolution of that, the continued growth in our students, um, and the development of, uh, our staff and the relationships that we have with those, our staff. We've taken some good steps forward with that. We have miles to go before we sleep. But, um, we are, we are heading in that direction. This board has been very effective in working together to take those steps and continue along that path. So, thank you.
Thank you. David Losky.
Some of the things that we're pushing forward this year, uh, in the K-5 schools, we've revamped the math curriculum. Hopefully, it's gonna provide more rigor and introduce more critical thinking skills to make them more successful on testing. We changed up, uh, language arcs last year so that they're more in line with standards, so that our students can perform better on testing. We're pushing for safety in schools this year. We're also trying to, uh, push on, uh, addressing the behavior problems that we've, uh, seen come out of the COVID. The social skills, the interactions among students, uh, it took a big hit. We're trying to push, uh, well, we're trying to push some success in athletics too. But we've got a wide range, a full plate of things that we're continuing to push, uh, for excellence.
Thank you. Vivian Moncton.
Well, as the other incumbents have mentioned, um, we're working on school security. I'm sure if you listened to the news today, there have been some other scary incidences at, um, other schools in the, in the nation. It just keeps happening, unfortunately. We're working on aligning our curriculum. We did give our teachers, our staff, not only our teachers, but our non-certified staff also, a, a very nice, um, contract this year. But I'm sure you've heard that there's a nationwide, uh, teacher shortage. It's not just locally, it's not just the state, it's nationwide. So we have to unfortunately protect, people are, um, poaching teachers. District will take a teacher, take it to another district. So we're trying to, um, protect our teachers and keep them here with us. We've got great staff, we wanna keep them here with us. So we're working on security, we're working on curriculum, we're working on continuing to enhance our staff benefits, so they'll stay with us. Yes, we're working on athletics. We're working, we're continually working on improving, um, the facilities within our district. We have a, a full plate. The board and the administration and the leadership of our, our teachers work very well together. And we're kind of a three-legged stool. We're trying really hard to protect, um, give and provide the best education that we can for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Jarvis Schwoop.
Uh, one of, one of the things that I would like to implement definitely is, like Al said, is the transparency, um, is streaming the school board meetings live. We do that for City Hall, unfortunately, I didn't do that tonight because I wasn't there. But, um, the transparency of the security issues, I was shocked to know that someone was roaming around in a school that shouldn't have been, and it took them a while to figure that out. So we have to address that issue. I've also worked with the school district and the superintendent on putting cameras outside the schools. I do manage the LPR system for the whole county, um, and, and three other states. So, um, with, with my knowledge in IT, um, I believe that we can secure the schools and definitely make our children and our staff members definitely feel safe because thank God that nothing bad happened with that individual walking around the school. Definitely the curriculum, we need to review that to make sure that the teachers, we're giving all the tools to the teachers and technology that they need to do their jobs. Without the teachers, our students won't learn. And that's, that's it.
Next question, starting with Beverly Vella. What are your views of having more social workers to help with reducing expulsions? Beverly Vella.
Instead of you repeating it, I asked if they could just clarify for me what you said. So having more social workers is absolutely important. It's not just social workers, though, it's a team. So, um, some school districts call it a care team, where you have a nurse, a counselor, a social worker, a teacher, a parent, representing and really thinking about the child's best interest, both academically and socially. So however the budget can align to more staff is ideal. I think what's really important with that is having a strategic plan in place. So if the district doesn't have a strategic plan in place with a proper vision and mission that matches that strategic plan, and then the budget, if the, then the budget can support that. So if there's something in the strategic plan that's increasing more staff connected to social work or counselors, then that should be part of the strategic plan that's then aligned to budget and can, and can withhold that.
Next, David Fritz.
I can't argue with more support staff or teachers. I think it all falls back to the availability of those people that are willing to take those positions in our schools. We could certainly work to make the, 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 uh, employment package more beneficial. But we continuously ask our, our administration to, uh, tell us what they need. And we push on that. And so I would, I would welcome more if we can find them. But I think that's the biggest, the biggest hurdle we have today is finding people to fill those positions. And unfortunately, that's the world we live in. And, uh, I, I don't know what that solution is to, to do that. I wish I had a, a checkbook that would allow me to write a lot of check with zeros to, to fix the problem. But, um, we don't, we live within our means. But I would, certainly would not argue with additional staff to support, to support our students. Thank you.
Next, David Lauschke.
Okay, I need that question one more time.
What is your view of having more social workers to help with reducing expulsions?
I think if you can find more effective social workers, it's great. Problem is, we're having a very difficult time finding effective, good, social workers. We're having a problem finding all kinds of staff needs. Special education is critical. We're having a hard time filling those spots. We've got some core curriculum where we're having problems finding them. And it's not just the Alton District, it's all of the surrounding districts. It's not a unique problem. But yes, I think if we can have more effective social workers, that could help us.
Vivian Moncton.
We have, um, we have great needs, but when a child comes to us for an expulsion, chances are they've probably been touched by several hands before they get to that. A lot of our students have already been met with, um, an administrative team, and they've worked through them with, um, they might have had, um, a, a plan in place that if they were having problems, that they'd been set up with, um, and they've been watched, and they've been helped. So it's not like they just had, uh, an issue at school and all of a sudden, oop, you're up for expulsion, that they've been worked with, with, and there's been a lot of administrative care that's been given to this student prior to the fact that they got to an expulsion. But any additional help that we could give them would certainly be, um, helpful. We have a lot of needs for a few of our students. And any additional help that we could get them would be wonderful. But as the previous participants have said, it's very difficult to find that kind of staff. We're just having staffing problems on a lot of levels, and not just us. It's not unique to our district, our community, our state.
Next, Jarvis Schwoop.
Uh, I agree, um, yes, I believe that we should, um, take those students and have them talk to maybe a social worker. Maybe the process that we're doing now isn't working. Is that student talking to one social worker, and the other student's talking to another? We need to look at the data, if we collect that data, and see which student talked to who and which one succeeded. And is it the social worker that's the problem? Or is it the student that needs more attention? Obviously, money's always a problem, but if we can take money from shipping them off to a, an alternative school, um, real, reallocate that money to, to another social worker or a team of social workers, or an organization that can help. Because the young lady in the back has some discouragement or not faith in the school board currently, that their child has been kicked out. I don't know her situation, but, um, I've had issues with, um, school staff in the past with my children, and I did not like the response that I got from them. I think they just gave up on us as parents when we're trying to fix the problem that our child brought to us, and it just got washed underneath the rug. So yes, we need social workers, and we need to, um, let those social workers work with the students before they're expelled.
Next, Al Womack Jr.
Okay, excuse me. Um, yes, but we have so many kids in survival mode that like, at some points during the year, you hear this term suspended curriculum. And I think that time could be used really working on coping and social skills with our kids. So we need to train our teachers a little bit more, not that they need anything anymore on their plate. But I think because I keep hearing there's a lack of, um, people wanting to get into the social work field, then we better train the people that we have so that they can help address some of those issues that our kids are having. And again, can empathize with the issues that our kids are having. And I think that all, that all falls under that trauma informed, um, model, that if our district adopts and fully adopts a tra, a trauma informed model, then we can help solve some of those problems.
We have one more question, and I was gonna do it because she came and explained it to me, and otherwise I wouldn't have been able to read the writing. But, so one of the things that, that one of them said was, um, somebody just wanted to make a comment that the statistics were very poor before COVID. And another person wanted to know, however, did COVID have an effect on data, pre and post? And I think, um, you know, I don't think anybody's going to, um, disagree with the fact that it certainly has affected attendance and things like that. But perhaps you could address whether COVID had an effect on the disparity gaps? I mean, did that affect, um, what we have previously seen as far as the differences between, um, performance of white students and performance of black students and the disciplinary disparities? So that's kind of a longer question, but somebody did ask about, did make the comment that they thought from being, having reviewed information from the past several years, that, um, COVID really didn't affect the disparities. But somebody did wanna know if, what effect COVID had on, um, data. Okay, sorry, I'm trying to put two questions together here. So, um, somebody made the comment that COVID certainly did not affect, um, disparity information over the past several years. But another person wanted to know, did COVID have an effect on the data that we have been discussing?
We'll start with David Fritz.
Now, I'd have to defer some of that, that question to, uh, our administration to get the more definite answer. But I'll tell you, I don't know how COVID could not have affected the disparity gap over the last two years. It's an unfortunate situation that every district throughout the world, whatever their teaching methods are, or school makeup is, uh, is facing. As I said before, you know, it, it shifted curriculum back at least two years, I would think. Again, I don't have the numbers, the raw data in front of me to speak to specifics. But of course, COVID had an effect, and we are still working out of that. And it will be many more terms, years, uh, as we work through it. So it's a, it's an unfortunate fact that, um, we lived through, that we experienced. But, uh, the, the teachers that rallied through COVID and continue to educate our students with the passion that they teach with are the teachers that are there in place today, that are still working with those students to bring them up to speed and even exceed expectations. So in a nutshell, yeah, I don't know how anybody could say that COVID didn't affect it. Of course it affected it, that's plain and simple, and we're working through that, so.
Next, David Lauschke.
I think I'm kinda clear on that question. If, if you look pre-pandemic, we were starting to make some inroads on the school report card. I'm not a big fan of the school report card because it's a snapshot in time. I like to look at where the kids start at the beginning of the year and how they progress to the end of the year, how much movement have they made? That, to me, is a more indicative sign of what we're doing in the district. I don't know that there was, in what little bit we've seen, I don't know that there was a difference in the gap. I think the gap stayed pretty close. But, you know, you would have expected more, and I think it would have been dealing more with the low income group rather than singling out white, black, whatever. And that what was available to them at home, uh, what kind of influences they were surrounded with. It's a little hard to be sitting here and teaching a kid remotely when you've got parents or people in the background that are talking so loud the kid can't hear what's going on in the computer, on the laptop. Yeah, everybody had a setback on that. How long it's gonna take to recover from that? Uh, that's, we're gonna find out how long that's gonna be.
Next, Vivian Moncton.
How could COVID not have had an impact? Did it have, I, I think it just took everybody down, the, the whole thing. Children, you know, either didn't have a laptop or had a laptop but didn't have internet, um, didn't have access to a hotspot, or parents were struggling to have, get to their job and couldn't help them with their, um, internet access. The whole world stopped, what, three years ago, last week? I mean, sometime, you know, and so all of a sudden, you know, we had to scramble to come up with the technology to be able to teach the children remotely. It was a social experiment for the world, not for Alton, not for Illinois, not for the United States, for the world. Um, and we're still recovering from it. Hopefully, we will get those, the whole system back up and running. But I, I think we probably lost two years of, um, test scores. We're coming back. I think we're coming, uh, we're gonna have to come back up from behavior issues because children, um, lost, they, they know that they lost their gains. And so, um, but I don't know that it really made a difference in the, in the, in the gap other than I think everybody lost. But, so I don't know if we can, if we can take the, the test scores yet. I think it's too soon, other than everybody as a whole lost.
Next, Jarvis Schwoop.
From my, from my prior research on the ISB report card, I believe that the numbers were pretty close to each other. So to say that, um, to say that the, um, COVID had an impact on some students, yes. I believe, yes, it did have an impact, internet access, I believe... all students had Chromebooks. Were their parents able to have transportation to take them to somewhere else? That had an impact on everyone. Now the students are coming back that were used to learning in the classroom, and they were learning on a laptop. Me personally, I can't learn on a laptop. I need to be face-to-face interaction, hands-on, read a book. I cannot read, I'm old school, I have to print it out and read it. That's just the way I am. That's the way I was learned. And some of these kids can learn from a laptop, some kids can't. So we just need to make sure we isolate those students that are having learning difficulties, that can't remote learn, and are failing doing remote learning, and make sure we give them some extra attention to make sure that they succeed.
Next, Al Womack Jr.
Okay, I got lost in the narrative. What's the question? I'm serious. She's like, no more. Okay, I'll just figure it out. So what I think I'm understanding here is, how many of us saw like, kids walking around in hoodies when it was 90 degrees? I did, I saw them every day, right? Mental health issues. We are like, the kids are covering up, they're struggling with things, and they've been open, and they've been sharing that they're struggling with depression and anxiety and all these other issues that we need to listen to. Because I think we're ignoring it, and that hood, under that hood is really a cry for help, saying like, help me, talk to me, connect with me, give me some support. So I just think it really brought about the need for us as a community and as a school district to address mental health, because they're open and sharing that they're struggling, and we have to find the help and resources for them.
Next, Beverly Vella.
Absolutely, COVID had an impact. You think about the staff that were teaching our students virtually, who are also parents. And you think about the parents who are working virtually, teaching their students. And you think about the students who are caught in the middle of the parents and the teachers trying to teach them virtually. So yes, it did actually, absolutely have an impact. In my opinion, academic progress is remaining the number one weakness for our Alton School District. I don't have the numbers from prior to pandemic, but right now, our district serves 5,800 students. And overall, we fall far below proficiency state averages. Our ELA data is at 14%. Our math data is at 13%, and our science data is at 39%. Have gaps closed? Doesn't appear. Many gaps have been closed, if those are our current, most recent data points listed on our report card and the Illinois websites. No, there, we did have a gap that closed. Our SAT scores closed. But you think about SAT, and it wasn't as magnificent as we would want it to be. Obviously, we want all of our students leaving our pre-K-12 system, ready to be thoughtful, responsible citizens, ready to go on to whatever their next adventure is. And with the academic data the way it is, we're not there yet. So I'm dedicated to promoting quality student achievement opportunities for our students that allow them to be competitive nationally. We have to raise the bar. I'm here to support increasing our data points. I believe in including more of our local community partners within our schools, expanding volunteer opportunities for, as well as increasing our high school internships, certifications, and apprenticeships options. I'm not saying they're not there, we need to increase them. I have the desire to use my 25 years of an experience in public education to support the academic, social, emotional policies and procedures within the Alton School District.
Last question, starting with David Lauschke. There is a discipline improvement plan on the district website. How do you think this plan will help close the racial disparity gap?
You said, what'd you say, discipline?
There is a discipline improvement plan on the district website. How do you think this plan will help to close the racial disparity gap?
Well, obviously, I hope that it will close the gap, and it's all gonna, I think it's all going to depend on how it's carried out, what kind of professional development goes with it. Yeah, I hope it will.
Next, Vivian Moncton.
Well, it takes many factors to close the discipline gap. It's the student, it's the student's family, it's the staff at the school. But a lot of it comes from the student and the student at home. And like I said, when a student comes to an expulsion, they've already had hands-on with a lot of other staff at the school. It doesn't, the student just doesn't show up at the administrative team and then comes to the school board. And so, but discipline is not just expulsion. There's a lot of other discipline that happens. When we see a student for an expulsion, we see their discipline record, and usually there's a lot of other, not always, but usually they have a lot of other instances of discipline. And so, the discipline record is there, and students need to, staff needs to follow through with that discipline on a regular basis. But students also need to pay attention and follow the discipline, because they're given their discipline handbook twice a year, and they know what's expected of them, and they need to follow through also. So it's a multi-pronged, it's a multi-pronged approach. Everybody needs to be on board.
Next, Jarvis Schwop.
I do, I do believe that, like I stated earlier, that some of these, just, can you repeat the question one more time to make sure I'm elaborating?
Yes. There is a discipline improvement plan on the district website. How do you think this plan will help to close the racial disparity gap?
Well, first, I'd like to know, I don't know what the disciplinary action plan is, but I do believe that we should review it and make sure that we're including everybody in it, especially the students. Because if we ship another student off to another institute or another school, that's not helping that child. Leave that child in the district, put them in a room, and make sure that they can still get the same education. It's kind of like the court system. You give the child in-school suspension. Is the in-school suspension not working? Okay, why is it not working? It goes back to what's going on at home. Is that child depressed, like Al said, walking around with his hoodie up? Is he afraid? Has, did COVID taken an impact on him? Is there, you know, is he having weird thoughts? We all need to take that into account. Like I said, I haven't seen the disciplinary action policy, but I believe it definitely needs to be reviewed.
Next, Al Womack Jr.
I won't ask you to repeat it. I got it. So, so discipline is important, and I think it starts with, again, who's all sitting at the table when that plan is in place? Are we including families? Are we including our school leaders? Are we bringing everyone in so that there's total buy-in? But then it has to be applied equally, and we have to be consistent with it. And it still goes back to, we have to assess our classroom teachers, our heroes, classroom management. You know, if you're consistent with classroom management, you're probably going to have a very low discipline issue in your classroom because of the management and the expectations. So I think a lot goes into it. Like Jarvis said, I have not seen it, but I hope that those things are taken into consideration when they develop it. Otherwise, we'll see more discipline issues.
Next, Beverly Vella.
I have seen it, and I commend the district for updating the discipline improvement plan most recently this school year. I hope it's not just a checkmark, that they're checking it off the box. I hope that the action, the actions have been updated with a clear plan. And again, I commend the district for taking the time to do that. And I think even more can be added. So I hope that it's a living document, and it's not set in stone. It is viewed annually versus whenever it's requested by the state. It's up to the board to hold this action plan with some accountability, because the board serves the district from the aerial view. And so if the board isn't holding up the discipline plan that has been submitted, then we're doing, the board is doing a disservice to that discipline plan.
Next, David Fritz.
I'll make no apologies for being a proponent of discipline and structure in our school system. I think it's something that we have to afford to all of our students. We can't let a student disrupt that learning process. But there are several interventions, as Ms. Moncton said, that are taken before it ever gets to an expulsion level. But, so, those interventions are widespread and very deep when we review those files. But again, as was mentioned earlier, it's a living document. It is reviewed by the administration, and that's part of the evolution. But I won't make, like I said, I won't make an apology for having discipline in our district. Again, I have to keep 2,500 students safe at the high school, 2,000 kids safe at the middle school, elementary buildings are smaller. And I can't have any student disrupt that and take away the opportunity to those other students for the choices that they make. So I would continue to work with the district and the administration, the teachers, all parties involved, to continually evolve that policy and continue on that path. So, thank you.
Okay, I think that's everything. Dorothy, do you have anything to say in closing?